That would be very appealing to me.
I make a motion that we table the employee reviews.
Okay. Second.
Are they not done or are they just?
A number of them are, but there are a few that are not yet completed, so.
So maybe we can-
There's no question they would be ready to go at the next meeting.
I know in past meetings as well, we've done like employee reviews and then administrative review too, so.
We need to do that too.
Yeah.
I could have all that done before the meeting in January.
So that- Um, yeah, I think in the past we've gotten like little something to fill out or whatever.
Yeah, we get the sheet, that three or four page sheet or whatever it is.
Yeah.
The one say one we use for-
We can get that or whatever for that meeting, that would be awesome.
Previous. And then I'll put them together like-
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to, or a motion to table the employee reviews. Motion by Batcher, second by Councilmember Highland. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. That item is tabled. Alright, then we'll move down to unfinished business, approve or deny transferring investment account from Morgan Stanley.
Included in your council packet was a questionnaire that a number of individuals had completed. We had interests from the former investment manager from Morgan Stanley, Roseanne and Rich. They worked with us for a number of years previously and then when Morgan Stanley made their decision that they were no longer going to service the municipal accounts that we had with them, they switched over to another company, RBC, and we're working, are working with them. They would be capable of servicing our accounts. Basically what we would do is, we would not have to cash out our CDs or anything like that. We would simply transfer it over to RBC and they would manage. We also had some interest from others about helping us to, in essence, manage our investments from several locals, one of whom is Ellen Felmy, who works up at Glencoe Bank but is Arlington resident, as well as Steve Homestead, who does the investments for the city of Gaylord. So I have included for your consideration the response from, from two of them, and what I'm handing out now is a copy of Ellen Felmy's response to the questionnaire. And I would be willing to take any questions that you have.
Do you have a request, or do you have a recommendation?
You know, I have worked well with Roseanne in the past. It's, it's up to the council. I mean, typically what we, we do is we ladder our investments so that they're maturing at different times, so if the city were to need funds, they would have some funds that would be maturing. There really isn't a, in my mind, I mean, it's taking a look at where can you get the best rate of return. And they all have a number of different resources to, to access to find the best rate of return, so. Like I said, I've worked well with Roseanne and Rich in the past, but, you know, I also understand that there's a preference to be able to do something locally, from your perspective, so.
I've known Ellen Felmy for a while through the chamber and through the bank and so forth. She seems like a very capable person. She's been at, with the security bank for, looks like ten years or more. Kind of also know Steve Homestead a little bit and it's almost like flipping a coin, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I've seen that Ellen has like three years of working with, oh, three and fifteen years? Working with certificates of deposit, but she doesn't work with any municipal investments. Where Steve does, but, I mean, I'm impartial, I mean, if we can keep it with, within where it's kind of at right now.
I mean, isn't all this kind of cut and dry? I mean, it's not like we're investing in risky stocks or nothing. I mean, it's for buying CDs.
Right, yeah.
Just a personal note, I, I'm the treasurer for the Historical Society and we do have all ours with Steve Homestead and he's been very nice to work with, so, but that's. I really think it gets down that it's important who you feel comfortable with working with. You're the one that's going to be working with him. Like you say, Adam, they all go to the same,
CDs.
They all look at the same market and see what's out there for CDs, so.
I don't think it really matters.
They're all looking in the same place.
I mean, does it matter if we have somebody that's five miles, ten miles, or fifty miles?
Not really.
Email. So who do we, who was it that you recommended then at the beginning?
Uh, the one that, that the city has worked with is Richard Moulton and Roseanne Kelly.
What's her firm name, what's the company name they're representing?
They were with Morgan Stanley and then when Morgan Stanley got out of the business of dealing with these accounts, they switched over to RBC, which is located in Minneapolis.
Is it RBC? Is there more to the title than that, or?
Wealth management.
Oh, yeah, wealth management, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'll make a motion to transfer investment accounts to RBC with the same people we've been using.
Same.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batcher to transfer the money that is currently with Morgan Stanley to RBC Wealth Management. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion's carried. Item twenty-one, approve or deny three-month listing contract with True Real Estate for the sale of TSE Building.
Councilmembers, this may be familiar. The EDA did recommend that we look at getting somebody who had maybe more of a metro focus involved in assisting the city to sell the TSE Building. They also recommended that we look to do a shorter term, and that's where you can see it's a three-month term that is being proposed in front of you. With True Real Estate, Amy Newsom has, has met with, with a-
Lindsay Thomas.
Lindsay Thomas.
Yep.
Lindsay Thomas, so, looking for your approval to go ahead and make this effective February first through the end of April, to try and generate some more interest in the TSE Building.
Can I just ask why the EDA didn't go with somebody from the metro?
Um, I, I'm not even sure who we all had actually from the metro to give us.
Just a fellow from New Prague was approached again, but he wasn't.
Isn't that?
Kobe, Kubish?
Kubish, Kubish? Yeah, and he did not get back to the EDA with any interest in it, so.
So, um-
Where is True Realty located? Are they?
They're southern Minnesota. I think they're all over, but southern Minnesota, they got, they're, they're out of-
Office in Henderson.
Henderson. They do a lot in Mankato.
Henderson is not a metro area.
No, no.
No, it's not, but we thought that she would do a great job. She's on the internet a lot. They're throwing stuff out there, the marketing, but the other thing is, is that we figured if we kept it at a shorter term to really see what she does with it, I mean, what's good, how much is that going to hurt? We're not locked into a whole year like we were with those other commercial contractors. She's going to throw it out there. The other thing that we talked about is not listing with her until February one. Um, because we wanted, like, if there's been anybody out there that had any interest, now that we don't have a Realtor on it, to give them the opportunity to come to the city of Arlington and maybe make a deal in between Realtors. Um, and sometimes that's, you know, people, people like to do that or whatever.
Can we market that somehow?
Excuse me?
Can we market it somehow?
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, if we have it for a couple of months, we should probably not just let it sit.
I'm going to guess that, I'm going to guess that Amy is, Amy is going to take care of that, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, the other piece to her contract is that with the incentives that we have in the EDA of, of basically giving buildings away if they bring in employees, I mean, that we needed to make sure that it was fair as far as her, her compensation. So she's getting, she, in the contract, it talks about her commission is based off of the price at the time. So if the price at the time, right now, we're going to list it for one forty-nine. If the price at the time that she sells it, or, or it sells and it's one thirty, she gets commission off of one thirty, even if the city only gets five thousand dollars into the building.
Yep.
I think I just found a use for the building. Why do you laugh?
Because usually your uses are laughable.
A homeless shelter.
Homeless shelter.
Well, there you go.
It's got heat and lights, bathrooms, a lot of space to spread out.
Yeah, little cupboards.
Lot of corners.
Little, little rooms.
Little cubicles.
Sure.
Got to get a hundred, two hundred people in there. Think what that would do to the population.
Oh, jeez.
What?
I'd like to approve a three-month listing contract with True Real Estate of Lindsay Thomas for the sale of TSE Building.
Starting February first.
Starting February first.
Second, could you second it?
Well, you beat me.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Highland to enter into an agreement with True Real Estate to list the TSE Building beginning February first for a term of three months. So it'll be February first through the end of April. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Alright, um. Approve or deny noise testing proposals?
Councilmembers, you're aware that we've been dealing with concerns from residents about the noise that is coming from Northland Drining. A number of individuals have been calling into administration and reporting loud disruptive noise, particularly in the evening and early morning. As a result, we have looked into possibilities for actually conducting some noise level testing. And in your packet, I have included two proposals, one from ESI Engineering and the second one from Hickey Consultants. Both of these individuals do deal with noise-related issues and have worked with businesses to address or mitigate noise. Just to kind of share with you some of the discussions that we have. Rich has been involved and we've talked a little bit about the different proposals. One of the things that seems to be readily apparent is that the noise varies depending upon the temperature, the wind, different things like that, and so in discussions, we would like to do a thorough testing, perhaps testing that would occur over a longer period of time, just to assure residents that we are trying to take into consideration that noise travels differently in different weather. We also want to, at the end of the day, have a report that we can share with residents. So regardless of whether or not Northland Drining is within the allowable range or not, to be able to show them that we've done our due diligence in terms of following up and getting high-quality testing. Some of you may be aware that you can get some testing devices on your phone. That's an option, but this would actually involve individuals possibly coming out with equipment that they would leave on site for a period of a day or two. They would then take it back and try and remove some of the other noise, but really measure the, the noise that's coming from Northland Drining. So the proposals are included. They include having a, at the end, having a conference call with the city as well as Northland Drining. It includes them wanting to get into Northland Drining to take a look at their equipment and how they're using it. Two proposals, the one from ESI Engineering for, and here you do have an option of doing a, a short-term measurement, which is when they just come out and they'll take the, the reading at that time. They'll measure for short periods of one to ten minutes and then they'll, they'll, that's their, their answer. Uh, the other one is the longer term, which would be two to three days, having a piece of equipment out there that's continuously recording. First one is a cost of three thousand two hundred. The second option is for a cost of four thousand five hundred. The other one, Hickey, would basically do a very similar process. The cost for that would be three thousand seven hundred and two dollars. That was for a one-time testing. If they were to come out and to do a prolonged testing, the cost would be about a cost of another trip, so you'd probably be looking at about six thousand for them to do the prolonged testing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The follow-up with them to find that out, so.
I did a little groundwork on, on some of this testing and maybe you already know it, but if we just had our decimal meter on our cellphone, you go out there and you get a reading, well, that doesn't really tell you anything. It tells you it's making noise, but I guess they test it over a period of time. You know, it's like the train going down the railroad tracks. When they go through town, they make a lot of noise, but they don't make that noise all day or twelve hours a day or two hours a day. So as I understand that the testing is on a high and low and they kind of take the average as to what, what the decimal readings are. So even though maybe at one point it may be loud, there's another point where it's not, so.
But if the loud really exceeds what they can exceed, they have to fix that piece, right? I mean, they can't be run, well, I mean, I'm just saying, they can't be running over the levels that the state regulations have put out, regardless of-
Probably after a long period of time. I mean, it might peak, but it couldn't, I don't think you could run it for seven hours over the-
I mean, we definitely have to do something, and I'm, I am totally for an extended reading because, I mean, I don't think that we're going to get a true reading with just being here for ten, fifteen minutes here, ten, fifteen minutes there. It needs to sit there for two, three days and different parts of town because, I mean, even up here, you can hear it some mornings, all the way up here.
There's a difference.
It just, it's like the races, right? I mean, some days you hear them, some days they sound like they're in my backyard. Some days I can't hear them at all.
The train only goes by in a few minutes and it's over. The plant is all day long. I'll, I'll go home and I can hear it. I never paid attention before. And even in the house, I can still hear that hum.
Yep, yep.
We were at the Arlington house, I think, Friday, Friday night, and it was really loud, right on Main Street. And so I thought, we'll go over by the plant, so we went over, you know, parked on Baker. It was quiet.
Right.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, it was like you're standing right next to the pipe almost.
Yeah, like the racetrack too, some Saturdays, you don't hear a thing.
Well, I'd like to, if I could-
And the others, they're-
Yeah, it is definitely atmosphere and wind.
Wind, I think, has, you know, and humanity plays a big part in it, denseness of the air.
Yeah, few of those foggy mornings, it was really, foggy evenings, it was really bad.
And we have received complaints, you know, from the east side of town, from the west side of town, and from the north. I mean, the only area we haven't had complaints are from the south.
That's right.
Much so.
How about the cemetery, anybody complaining?
Not.
Shelley, why don't you call in some morning just to-
Yeah, I should, huh? Oh, look, can I make a motion to approve the bid from ESI for forty-five hundred dollars? That's their elongated, um, yeah, option two.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Cowell to approve the bid of ESI. Am I calling that the right thing?
Yep.
ESI, in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars for option two, the long-term measurement version of their testing. Any other comments, questions?
Can I get a little flexibility with that number? I know in talking with them, they do have included that they will put together a report if we should want to talk with them or if we have questions about that report. I think that there may be a benefit to having a conference call with Northland Drining and with city staff to ask for their questions. And then it would only be the cost of their time, won't be them driving out here, but it would be somebody who could answer.
You mean after the testing?
After, after the testing.
I'll include that in my motion if that's okay.
Okay, again, the motion is, is by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Cowell to approve of the long-term measurement option two version from ESI at forty-five hundred dollars and to also include, um, we want to-
For consultation if needed.
Yeah.
Test results.
Potentially an extra charge for consultation of test results.
Are you agreeable?
Agreeable with that, alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Okay, move to item twenty-five, approve or deny contract with Sibley County for consulting economic development services.
The city is currently under contract with, with the county for Amy Newsom to perform as the Economic Development Director. Her rate of pay was forty dollars. That is being increased to forty-two dollars an hour. We have had the benefit of having Amy for eight hours per week, plus an additional amount of time that was paid for by a grant that the, the county secured. So what I'm looking for from the council is to go ahead and to approve an agreement for consulting services for eight hours a week at forty-two dollars an hour for continuing Amy Newsom's services to December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen.
I think she's worth an extra twenty dollars. I'll make a motion that way.
But you are a spin-thrifter.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Batcher to approve the hiring, or approve the twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen contract with Sibley County for consulting economic development services, Amy Newsom at a dollar hour, per hour rate of forty-two dollars at eight hours per week. Who seconded that? Did I have it right?
I did.
You did, okay. And that motion by Yashewski, second by Councilmember Batcher. Any additional comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. Item twenty-six, approve or deny twenty-nineteen tax levy, resolution eighty-three dash twenty-eighteen.
Provided for you in your packet is a resolution eighty-three twenty-eighteen, laying out the general fund as well as the debt, which, putting that all together, the total certified levy we are looking at is a six percent increase, which would bring us to the number of eight hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. This was achieved by making some adjustments for the squad car, but it does include the significant projects that we have, which are extending utilities to Nancasi, which is being paid for from reserves in the water account, the fifty-seven thousand dollars, which will be put down as a down payment for replacing and installing street lights throughout the city. And the third item, which is the eight hundred megahertz antenna, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're able to get those three projects in there. We also have the general fund that is growing, looking at some of our increases. The biggest increase is in the police department for adding a, another officer as well as increasing the current coordinator position from fifty, half-time equivalent to a full-time equivalent. And then adding the administration position from a half-time equivalent, adding on some additional time there as well, making that a four-fifths equivalent position, so. Four days a week.
There was something, when you were reading those highlights, that just popped in my head that we never discussed. Did we pick a, a due date for the lights? Or, or, you know, because they could stretch it out.
We don't, at this time, we don't have anybody that we're contracting with to do it. We do have the possibility of getting a loan through Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op. Basically that loan would, we would pay down twenty-five percent and then they would provide a ten-year interest-free loan for the remaining seventy-five percent of that cost.
Guessing if you said a possibility, could, would it be too strong to say a probability of getting that loan? And if that loan would not be approved, then we would have to take a second look at the whole project?
Yes, yeah, no, I would, I would agree. I mean, we're looking at a total cost of about two hundred and ten thousand to purchase the lights and then also to pay someone to do the installation of them. So it would be your street lights as well as your more decorative acorn lights.
And we'd like it done this year.
It would be done, yeah.
Or it would need, or would it need to be because of the, the loan?
You know, I haven't dug into, find out all the details on it, so I don't know, but I could certainly look into that and see if there's a, a requirement as to when the project has to be completed.
Yeah, probably need a timeline. You should probably get the ball rolling on it if we can.
I would imagine the first thing we do is apply for the loan, see if we get it, and then we can- I would imagine the first thing we do is apply for the loan, to see if we get it, and then we can move ahead with the bidding and all of that.
So, I was under the impression that we, um, even though we're doing all these big projects and such, that we still were gonna try and keep the tax levy at around four point five percent, not six percent. Or lower, but.
Yeah, that's what I thought our last discussion was, too, or like, maybe, I thought we had talked like four point nine or something like that, but.
We do have, if we look at the, uh, if we look at the budget, we do have with a six percent increase, we do have about eighteen, eighteen, uh, thousand above expenses, which would basically equate into about two percent. So, that is an option for the council, uh, there was discussion about that, but in, I didn't know that that was the sentiment of the whole council, that they wanted to come down, I knew there were a couple people who would express that. Uh, we can certainly make that change, if that's what the council chooses to do. I will just comment to you that, you know, we do have significant projects going on, if ever there was a time to justify a six percent, I think that, you know, with eight hundred megahertz with the street lights, and with Ninkazi, I mean, we're spending considerable amount of reserves, uh, uh, to make all this happen. You know, but ultimately, that's your call, and if you wish to, to drop it down two percent, uh, I believe that you could do that.
So, we would be right at zero on that eighteen thousand dollar line.
You'd be pretty, yeah, you'd be pretty close, and I could.
No fudge factor there.
You, you're still using reserves, you're still using reserves from your, from your water fund, um. You are.
Well, I think in those numbers, Jim, it's not just like, oh, this is exactly what it is, I think we gave a little bit of room, we didn't co- we weren't really, really tight, really, really hard with the pencil, we were a little soft to give it room. And I mean, I think the departments honestly have done great jobs sticking with their budgets, or staying under their budgets. Um, you know, or having five or ten thousand left at the end of the year to do something that they really need to do, um, so.
You know, we have an administrative assistant at thirty-two hours a week, and I, when, when that individual's hired, and I'll tell you, I witnessed what she was handling last week, when some of these things were happening, and, uh, we're glad we ha- I think we're awfully, we should be fortunate that we have her in there. Very mature way of, of dealing with those things, um, if we're ever looking at putting her full-time, which I think we said we'd look at after she had a chance to work with, you know, when Annie came back, we better have some money in the budget to cover that, so I would like to see a little cushion stay there, a little of the excess, but, uh, I, I, we don't wanna lose her, I'm telling you, we don't wanna lose her, we brought her in to give some assistance to our city administrator, and, uh, the way things have been, you know, with, with Annie out on, on maternity leave, and, and some other issues that have come up within the last month or so, um, there really hasn't been time that she's had to assist Pat.
So, I'm, I'm, so I'm kinda confused, 'cause we got an email saying that, um, that was gonna be in, possibly, or be included, 'cause am I correct?
That well, it's gonna be included, the.
The, the administration, I mean, for how we cut some place, some stuff from the library, or found some stuff from the library, and did some other stuff, and.
I think he's referring to this statement here, that you made, after cutting the administrative budget to bare bones, carry this position, administrative seventy-six, fifty-two has been.
Has, has to be.
Has to be added, so that would be over and above.
So, that would be up to you, yeah.
Over and above what we're looking at right now, even.
Correct, that.
That would bump it up to about seven percent, rather than six percent.
We, we currently have, with everything the way it is right now, we currently have about sixteen, well, eighteen thousand. You know, if you were to go ahead and put in the administrative assistant, that would be that seventy thousand.
Basically, uh, seven thousand six hundred, which is close to another percentage.
So, then you'd still have basically one percent left.
Well.
I can change, I can change those numbers, what I've brought to you is basically where, where we are at following the last meeting, where we said that we were going to go ahead and keep the administrative assistant at thirty-two.
Right.
Under the current situation. We did not have that factored into the two thousand eighteen budget, because that was basically, uh, several months, uh, that she's been in that position, and she has been working, not thirty-two, but she has been working forty hours in order to help us to accommodate not having another staff person. I think she's been doing an outstanding job, I know that she hasn't made this into an issue, I know that she's been out there on Saturday morning working with Kirby, dealing with some different, um, cemetery-type issues, um, and I hope that you all realize that administration isn't just serving administration, but administration, I think, is, is supporting a lot of , uh, departments, whether, whether it be dealing with this whole cemetery issue, um, you know, or trying to free up Vicky's time, so that she can focus on, on more, right now, Vicky is spending a significant amount of time, and as you know, we are behind in terms of minutes, um, but we are trying to find time to pre-up Vicky, so that she can be on percent over at police department, but we're having a tough time making that happen because of other duties. But you tell me what you want, and, uh,
Well.
we can make it.
If we take that eighteen thousand and cut it in half, it'd still be room for the, if we decide to add her full-time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, that would at least drop it some, it'd probably be around that five, that five percent or something.
Four point nine.
What if you.
That's what I thought we talked about last time, was four point nine.
Well, I talked about three.
Oh, right.
Yeah, uh, numbers are brought out.
You guys talked about a little bit more, but I think the four point nine is sticking in my head, although I don't wanna say that out loud. Four point nine, I would, I would, I would make a motion to have it be four point nine.
And let's see what we got for, what do we have to do to get down to that number?
Give me just a minute here, so what was the, what was the added number for the second thousand?
Well, we're just gonna take this and take half of the excess at eighteen thousand, or?
Yeah, just subtract.
I mean, I mean, al- ultimately, all we're doing is using more reserves, correct?
Nine, nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars, nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars you can have to the administrative line up on top.
What did I mean?
Add what, nine thousand?
Two hundred.
I thought that number was.
Two hundred and nine dollars.
Nine thousand two hundred nine, ninety-two oh nine.
Well, to the administration.
Cuts it in half, put, put that up in the administrative office line.
Let's just go two fifty-nine, let's just go two sixty-nine.
Um, yeah, you're in the wrong, you're in the wrong, there you go.
Two fifty-five or whatever.
Nine, two, five.
So, instead of going two fifty-three, just go two sixty-three. I'm just gonna put it right there. So, you'd have, uh, basically about seven thousand left.
And then put that to zero. And see what percentage we have.
Put what to zero?
Put what to zero?
That bottom line. Or not that one, one above it, the sixteen.
Oh, the sixty-eight thirty-one?
Uh, we'll find out, that's our revenue or whatever.
Isn't that our?
That's like our leftover.
That's, that's the difference between your expenses and your revenue, so.
Okay, we're gonna leave it at there.
Yeah, so that would be less than roughly eight percent, eight thousand is one percent, so you're at about five. So.
Eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three.
I don't know, I guess, I left the last meeting at four point nine, I'm, I'm kinda sticking with it, guys, so whatever.
I guess, I, I sorta gathered you were.
Whatever, whatever, whatever it takes to get there, then I'll.
Well, how about like five point one, are you gonna go no against it?
It's just a number.
It's just a number, that's right.
Four point nine, six percent, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sixty-four thousand dollars. It comes out to about three dollars a household.
I agree with Administrator Melvin, that if there's any year we can justify what we're doing and, and with a six percent increase, I mean, if this, if you can't go out to the constituents and and list the projects that we've got going, and that we're gonna accomplish with the six percent increase, and I'm sorry, but.
I wanna make a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen tax levy, is it resolution eighty-three twenty-eighteen as presented originally?
I second it.
As it was, or what?
At what's on the sheet, eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three?
Down to eighty-five.
Six percent increase.
Eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three.
Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-eighteen is introduced by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski. Uh, approving the resol- or the, um, budget at a grand total certified tax levy of eighty, eight hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. It's a six percent increase over twenty-eighteen. Additional comments, discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batch?
Yes. Well, I know it's fair, but it's not, I.
Four votes, four votes in favor, none against, and one council member absent, the resolution is adopted. All right.
You'll have to fix your sheet again, Pat.
What's that?
You'll have to fix your sheet again.
Yeah, well, does, so, by approving that six percent now, does that impact, is that with the administration?
No, it's not.
It's however, whatever you presented us, that's what it is.
Yeah, we, you have eighteen thousand something excess.
Eighteen, okay, okay, it's with that change?
Yeah, with that, no change, I mean, eighteen thousand excess.
So, take that ten thousand, wherever that was, and take, take that back out, and then we have that eighteen thousand.
Yeah, whatever changes you just made, you'll have to fix, fix.
I think you just added ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, twenty-five to fifteen?
Maybe you get that, and then we'll go to the next one, wait until you get that changed.
Okay.
Looking for this one?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope, we approve that one.
You got it, you got it done?
Yep, this is the municipal budget.
Now, we're working on twenty-nineteen municipal budget, resolution eighty-four dash twenty-nineteen.
This is, this is just.
This is the long listing of every line item. That is contained.
Well, it's good we didn't change anything.
And no, Jim, I'm not going to go through this line by line.
Come on.
Because if we would've changed something.
If I wake, if I go to sleep, wake me up.
That would've changed.
This is just the same thing, just.
Every line item.
I'll introduce resolution eighty-four twenty-eighteen, a resolution adopting the twenty-nineteen Arlington Municipal Budget.
Second.
Resolution eighty-four dash twenty-eighteen is introduced by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batch, and that is a resolution adopting the twenty-nineteen Arlington Municipal Budget. Any comments, questions, typos that you've noticed? We'll vote by roll call, Councilmember Batch.
Yeah.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, resolution is adopted. Councilmember Committee Updates, are there any?
I've got the hospital.
I think we missed.
Did we miss something?
Oh, is this Ninkazi closing?
To Ninkazi, closing?
It isn't.
Is it?
What, uh, what item, what item number?
It's twenty.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, under there, okay, I see, I see, I just jumped in. Ninkazi closing, all right.
It's, simply wanted to share with you that Ross, working with, uh, Ross and, uh, Rich, we had, uh, closing on, uh, uh, Friday, so, um, there were two things that were kind of, uh, hanging us up a little bit, uh, the job creation fund, as well as the tax abatement, uh, the the deal went through, uh, with, uh, still kinda hanging on as a contingency, the job creation fund, you as a council have already approved their, uh, application to the job creation fund, um, so, we'll just wait until they're ready to submit that application and provide them with that letter, with regards to abatement, you guys really only have control over the city's tax abatement, so we hope that the county will pass the abatement, however, if for some reason they don't, uh, Ninkazi does have the option of getting out, correct, Ross?
Yes, well, they essentially sell the property back to the city, the same place.
Right.
Well, we'll play the phone, you know, stick with.
Okay, that's for the Ninkazi closing, and Committee Update?
Yes, twenty-eighteen was a very successful year at Ridgeview Civil Medical Center, there was, uh, growth in inpatient volumes, clinic volumes, outpatient volumes. Uh, growth was over twenty-seventeen volumes, uh, a lot of activity around the emergency department, as it was remodeled and expanded. The emergent, uh, veterans serve our community on top of the year-long construction project of the campus, uh, we've been able to generate positive financials with operating, with a positive operating margin, I'm excited, this is Ben Nielsen, uh, who's filling in for, uh, Todd since he moved up to Aiken, I'm, he was excited that, that they can accomplish, or what they can accomplish in twenty-nineteen. The budget, uh, for the next. The budget for the next year, or twenty nineteen, plan is, you know, like always, is a little hairy when you set up a budget, but they have lofty targets and, and that'll motivate the departments to continue to grow and find their ways to be more efficient. Opportunities to increase income with established group of providers. They're adding a new physician next fall here in Arlington. He's optimistic that the clinic volumes will continue to grow as we complete the remodeling and expansion of the emergency department. He expects that we will see volumes back to the sixteen and seventeen volumes. They'll put emphasis on understanding the drivers that impact inpatient volumes this coming year as they strive to keep more patients in Arlington, and that I thought, I wanted to emphasize that, that we're not just, you know, somebody that's under Waconia's wing. They are expecting a lot out of us. Risks that we face, Medicare reimbursement can influence our financial performance significantly. Inpatient volumes may also are, are risks. The volumes have been volatile from the start of eighteen to the end of eighteen, and the volatility is going to continue. And then, we spent a good time discussing what the board's job is and things that they can learn. For example, marketing update, emergency burn, update population, health. Then they ask for suggestions as to what the board would like to see for topics. And, and if there's anything that you as a, a, a city council would like the hospital to deal with, do so, but topics that they will either have somebody on staff or bring in a speaker to discuss things on mental health. Community events, kind of like coffee, but with a speaker. Like, excuse me, coffee with the mayor, I got a little ahead of myself, and then the staff, what the staff feels about the board, what can the board do for, for the staff, making conditions better, to, things that are needed in the hospital, for the hospital, and so on. Have the CEO come in and speak and hear his point of view. Chemical dependency and what's, how Ridgeview is attacking that scene or those issues. How do we, how do things get done, how the, the order of, or how does the hospital run? Then they also had nominated two previous board members to come, come back for a new three-year term to begin in January, and they were Lisa Farr and Diane Bias-Mozel. And that's pretty much our meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion under open discussion, anything one wants to bring up? Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batshir, seconded by Councilmember Cowell to adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried.
Boy, what a marathon.
It's a lot of stuff.
We're recording here for the first hour and a half.
Yeah.
Imagine if we did the employee review.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of stuff.
Oh, I'm going to Christmas shopping tomorrow.
You know, Jim, on the, Jim on the TSE building, the homeless shelter? I thought you were gonna say homeless shelter slash water park.
Will they get a shower while?
They have to shower, yeah.
Yeah, we can move all that from the navigation center out here.